Good evening. I'm Dr. Tracy Frederick, Director of Engagement and Strategy. And I am here with Warwick Cassidy, the Executive Director. We're both from Kansas School Board Resource Center. And we welcome you to the second session in the School Board Training Academy. Tonight, we have Dave Chobert, CEO of Kansas Policy Institute, who will dig into and present Lessons One and Two, Student Outcomes and the Purpose of School District from the book, Eight Things to Know About Running for School Board. Now, if you are new to this session or you attended the last session, you need to realize you're live with us in the room. So we invite you to keep your camera on, particularly when you ask a question, so Dave can see who you are. But meanwhile, if you have background noise, if you would be kind enough to mute your microphone, that would be helpful to us. But please make sure that you unmute when you have a question. If you would like to ask a question of Dave throughout his presentation, you can use the raise hand reaction at the bottom of the screen. Or if you would like for me to ask a question for you, just put it into the chat and I'll monitor that for you. And I'll ask Dave that question for you at the appropriate time. Also, we will be recording this, as you saw, and I will send you a link to this recording. It will also be posted on our workshop video portion of our website after this, as well as the PowerPoint slides that Dave will be presenting. So let's go ahead and get started. And I'm going to turn it over to Dave to begin his presentation.
Okay, let's see if I can do the share properly. There we go. All right, so I appreciate everybody being here tonight. As Tracy said, feel free, if you need to ask a question, to jump in. I will allow time at the end, just for kind of a general discussion. If you want to wait to ask questions, then that's fine also. So let's just go ahead and get started. We're going to do Lesson One and Two tonight. Lesson One is about the realities of student achievement. In most cases, and most states, the outcomes are considerably lower than what a lot of parents have been led to believe. We know that everybody wants achievement to be high, and it's natural to want to believe that. But it's unfortunately, the outcomes are much lower. Here in Kansas, we have, we're below the national average. That wasn't always the case. Kansas was above the national average until about four or five years ago. Not that the national average was what anyone might call good. But now Kansas is below the national average. And we're not among the 10 best states, as often claimed by the Kansas Association of School Boards. They have their own methodology they use to determine who they believe have the 10 best outcomes. Unfortunately, Kansas has never even been close to the top 10. We don't have a single ranking in the top 10. We might have one in the top 20 out of eight different measurements. And I'll mention also, especially welcome here to the folks joining us from other states. I've included some information on more than just Kansas to try to make this a little bit more relatable to you. Now, let's talk a little bit about rankings. We hear a lot in Kansas that, you know, we're above the state average. Or, you know, we're ranked whatever. Rankings sound nice again, but they really don't mean much. Especially if, I mean, the example I've used is, I think I used this in the book. Kid comes home from school and he says, hey, Mom, guess what? I got the best grade in class today. Really? What was it? Oh, it was the best grade in class. And after a little bit more prompting, you find out that best grade was just a C. Well, best doesn't mean much if you're only getting a C. And that's really what we're hearing about when we're talking about rankings. So here's a, this picture kind of sums up what's wrong with student achievement. We have on the blue line is the Kansas High School graduation rate. And this is according to the Department of Education. You can see it's almost at 90% now. But on the red line, college readiness has dropped from 32% in 2015 to now just 8% or 18%. It's been a pretty steady decline. And yet, no, the Department of Education and school districts don't like to talk about actual outcomes. They like to talk about things like graduation rates, because that's something that a school district can control. These are the numbers from the Kansas State Assessment Results. The current assessment was first given in 2015. And so we have every year on here, except 2020, when the test wasn't given because it was canceled with COVID. Kids were out of school in the spring. And you need to really focus on two columns here. The one on the left, below grade level, and then proficient. The middle will go up and down depending upon how kids move in and out of the first and third column. So in math, you can see that in 2015, about a quarter of students, 23%, were below grade level in math. Now, this, by the way, is grades three through eight and 10. And so it's the average of all those grades. Now, we're at 33% below grade level. One in three are below grade level. And you can see that these numbers, COVID had an impact, but this isn't a COVID phenomenon. You can see that results were declining before then. The proficiency level held rather steady for math up to 2019. But we were seeing more kids who were maybe at grade level falling below grade level. The decline in proficiency in English Language Arts was more precipitous, going from 41% down to 37, and now down at 34. So there's a long way from what a lot of people might consider to be acceptable outcomes. Now, where the previous slide was for all grades tested, this is just the 10th grade result. And 10th is the only high school, so this is representative of high school. And you can see here, the numbers are even worse. Unfortunately, we have almost half of our high school kids below grade level in math. At 46, I'm sorry, 41%. And only 27% proficient, I'm sorry, that's the state, yeah, state average, 21. The 35% below grade level in English Language Arts and 28% proficient. So it really says something, and it explains, it kind of validates the college readiness numbers we saw in the ACT, when you have more kids below grade level than are proficient in high school. And some of the numbers are really, really scary. I mean, you look at Kansas City, Wichita, with just 9%. Garden City, just 6% proficient in math and 60, 70% below grade level. So how did we get in this position? And one thing you want to always look at is within your district, what the longitudinal trend sees. So there's those kids in 10th grade, 46% below and 21% proficient. When those kids were, generally speaking, obviously, there are some differences in the body makeup. But that class was in third grade in 2017. And look at the difference, 17% below grade level and 52% proficient. And as you see them move through their school career, you see a pretty steady decline in outcomes. What a lot of the researchers say is that this means kids are really not getting what they need at the very early grades. And then as the material becomes more challenging, they're not able to keep up. There's other factors. But there is a large body of research that says if you are not at grade level, like if you're not reading at grade level by the time you leave the third grade, there's less than a 20% chance you'll catch up. It's that important that kids get the absolute fundamentals down and be proficient, not just basic. There's also large achievement gaps. And this is nothing that's Kansas-specific. Almost everything you're going to see here, you would see to differing degrees in every state. So let's just look at the 24 numbers, where you have 46% of low-income kids, this is all students, below grade level. Only 20%, well, only, that's still a lot. 20% below grade level for the kids who are not low-income. Income breakouts from the Department of Education are based on eligibility for free and reduced lunch. So it's not like an absolute test of income, but that's the proxy for it. And you can see that these gaps are not only wide, but pretty steady. It's, and it's important to understand these gaps exist because this is one of the reasons, one of the big reasons why you really can't compare your Kansas district to a different Kansas district. If they have a different mix of low-income and not-low-income, you'll have, the district that has more kids who are not low-income is going to get an artificially looking higher score because of those gaps and that they have more of the kids who aren't suffering from the gaps. But it's just how the math works out. So you can compare your trends over time in your district. But if you want to compare to other districts, instead of looking at averages, you would need to compare low-income to low-income. There, you're going to get a reasonable comparison. This is the same thing for English Language Arts. It's, the numbers are a little bit different, but the concept is the same. You have, you're twice as likely to be below grade level in English Language Arts if you're low-income than if you are not. Now, some people, we've heard a lot of questions from parents, from board members, asking, why do we do state assessments? Why are they needed? Because they'll say that, you know, a single test doesn't necessarily represent what a student knows is unable to do. You might be just not a very good test taker. That's certainly possible. But one of the reasons we have to do it is it's required. The federal Every Student Succeeds Act requires every state to have an assessment test. They can design their own. They could substitute something for a standard state assessment test, but they have to have something. And it's also, I mean, even without the federal intervention, local school boards need some independent means of measuring progress. We know we can't count on what shows up on report cards because every school has varying degrees of grade inflation. We were talking, Tracy was working with one school district, and they discovered that the practice in the district was that every kid gets promoted grades one through eight regardless of whether they're ready to go. And the community was appalled, and I think that's been halted now. But there's, you need that independent means of measuring it. Well, I already covered that point. And because you have these kids below grade level, having a low chance of catching up, the state assessment data really helps identify the kids who have needs and the school and the district overall. And it's a way of comparing like one elementary school in a district to another. It might help identify some better teaching methods that you might want to replicate or understanding why there's differences. There can be some benefits come from that. And the longitudinal data, you want to really be able to track. This is something you can't get from just looking at a student's report card. You really need some independent data to look at that shows how is this student progressing as they move from third to fourth to fifth and so on. Now, one of the challenges in looking at proficiency levels on your state assessment is that it might be a low standard. And what this is, from the National Assessment of Educational Progress, where they map states, what the state standard for proficient against the US Department of Education proficiency standard. This is the fourth-grade reading. And this is from the 2022 mapping. This is different than what was, what's in the book because it came out just at the end of December. But you can see that there's one, two, three states. Massachusetts, Rhode Island, and Oklahoma have state proficiency standards for fourth-grade reading that are considered proficient by the National Assessment for Educational Progress. On the other end, you have Virginia, Iowa, and Ohio, who's have proficiency levels that translate to below basic. So you might see, like Virginia, you look on Virginia's state assessment, it might show three-quarters of the kids are proficient. They're not, but it looks that way because they have such low standards. Think of it like setting a scale score. It's, you know, it's 90 to 100 and A, or is 70 to 100 and A? That's going to depend, that's going to certainly affect the grade point average. So I've circled some other states on here, so you can see. Well, I know we have folks registered from Minnesota, Delaware, Arizona, certainly Kansas, Wyoming, and Indiana. There might be some others that have joined since I put this slide together. But most states are kind of there in the middle of basic. So if you can count on your state assessment results being higher than is reality. And so when you have these low standards, this is where an example of the inflated outcome. So Massachusetts, remember Massachusetts had, their proficient was equal to proficient nationally. There's only a three-point difference. State assessment says 37, NAEP shows 40% proficient for fourth-grade reading. But look at these others. Kansas, these are all states in the middle of the pack and middle of basic. 15-point difference in Kansas, 20-point difference in Arizona. It goes on and on. I'm not sure why Indiana is only 48-point difference, 42 versus 34. But when you have low standards, you're going to get these kinds of gaps. And not that NAEP is the absolute, because every student doesn't take it. So you won't get a NAEP score for your district, but it's a much, it's a pretty accurate read on, for state results. Now, let's talk about performance level descriptors. So it's a, they're often pretty deceptive and sometimes unfortunately by design. The performance level descriptor is something like proficient or below base, below grade level or basic, whatever you call it. And again, every state does something different. But unfortunately, you just can't take the words at face value, and you have to test for consistency. Like, what is the state assessment for 10th graders? How does that compare to ACT or SAT or the fourth and eighth grade? How does that compare to NAEP? So here's an example. And this is, this is from the book, North Carolina Reading Grades. They have level five is the highest, level four, three, and then not proficient. Well, why did they skip levels one and two? That, why would, I mean, not proficient? I don't know, but there was a reason for it. And it's a question that North Carolina School Board members should really press the Department of Education to understand that. It says not proficient doesn't meet grade-level proficiency standard. On the right, we have college and career readiness. Well, how can you be in level three at grade level, but you're not college and career-ready? What does that mean? There's no right or wrong answer to it. But the fact that you can be considered at grade level and Kansas has something very similar, but not academically prepared for life after high school, that's a real head-scratcher. And so it's, you have to understand, kind of read between the lines to know what those state assessment results mean. So here's something that Kansas, this is some history on Kansas. In the first column, these are the result, the performance level descriptors that were introduced in 2015. So level four was called excellent, and the kids had, were academically prepared. They have an excellent ability to use and apply material, and they're academically prepared for post-secondary. Level three, also academically prepared, but with effective knowledge. Level two was designated as at grade level with basic ability. And level one didn't have a label on it, but by virtue of being below level two and level two at grade level, it's pretty clear that level one is below grade level. What happened then was a lot of parents and legislators were starting to understand that we had a lot of kids below grade level. And in 2018, then, the Department of Education changed. They basically scrubbed the words "grade level" from the definitions. Nothing else changed. The cut scores didn't change, the tests didn't change. They just redefined so that it just was limited or basic or effective or excellent ability. And at that point, the Department of Education said it's inaccurate to describe any students in Kansas as being below grade level on the state assessment because, in their words, the assessment only measures grade-level performance. Well, that seems like to me, it's kind of right up there with the dog ate my homework type of excuse. How can you know whether someone is, needs additional help if you're really want to try to say everyone's at grade level? You know, it's like saying every baseball player is a Hall of Fame hitter, but some of them just don't really actually hit that well. It's craziness. So now Kansas is putting a new state assessment together that there is a new test that kids are taking right now. So there will be a break, we believe there will be a break in the longitudinal numbers. It'll be very hard, if impossible, to compare 24 state assessment results with 25. In February, they came out with new proposed performance descriptors, starting at the top with exceeds expectations, then meets expectations, and working toward the expectations. And the bottom was identified need. Well, what does any of that mean? What's your expectation? Do you have high expectations, low expectations? These are meaningless. When we found that, we put a lot of pressure on, wrote editorials, got in touch with state school board members. And magically, at the April meeting, they came in and said, now, these are what we're going to propose. And it went back to levels one through four and pretty much the same as what they have now. And when we asked, what changed your mind? Why did you, why did you switch from February? They said, well, what are you talking about? What's the basis for you saying that? We said, well, here, it's the video of your state Board of Education meeting. And then they went silent. These, when you find states trying to change these levels, it's almost always, I guess it's human nature, maybe, but there is an attempt to cover up what's really going on. And because when parents find out there's a problem, they naturally expect somebody to do something about it. And one of the premises of why we are where we are is that adults, adults in the Education Administration really want kids to do better, but not if they have to change their own behaviors to make that happen. So here, we have no one below grade level. Theoretically, according to Kansas, no one is below grade level. So this is part of the marketing campaign, by the way, that we used to drive home the point. You know, last week, Melanie talked a lot about effective messaging. And one of the examples, one of the recommendations was if you can find a way to inject a little bit of humor, it can be an effective messaging tool. So she was talking about a proposal, a legislative proposal in Colorado that said parents could be held, they could take kids away from their parents. If a child said, I have this new identity, and the parent doesn't recognize it, they can, they can come in and take your kids. So humor could, would be a better, maybe, way of approaching that. Because I know if, if that happened when one of my kids was in school, he might have come home and just for the fun of it said, Dad, I now identify as a king, so you will call me your majesty. Well, then the troublemaker could have the police call. It's, you try to show the, just the ridiculous nature of how things can be taken out of control, it might help. So this is something we sent to, Randy is the Commissioner of Education, Randy Watson in Kansas. He was quoted in a newspaper story saying, a lot of research says if you're not up, not at that grade level by the time you hit third grade, it's really hard to catch up, and most do not. Well, he's right. But they've also said the state assessment result doesn't, state assessment test doesn't measure grade, below grade level. So we asked him the question in red. How do you know who needs help to catch up to grade level? And 10 days have gone by now, and he has not responded to the question. They won't, because they got caught in this. And this is what happens a lot, unfortunately. You know, everybody's working hard. They all want kids to do better. So when there's a problem, own it, and it's nobody's fault. But everybody's responsibility for moving forward to fix these things. Covering up, just it's, you know, the cover up sometimes is worse than the original sin. So here, we introduce some NAEP numbers to bring in some other states. This is eighth-grade reading, and this is all students. So you can't really compare one state to the other because of those different demographic mixes, but you can see the trends. And what's important here is that there is a pretty decided downward trend starting in 2013 for most states. Indiana hit a little spike in 2017 and came back a little bit in '24. But generally speaking, you can see the trend. And that should be telling state education department something, something. And you're probably seeing very similar results if you look over time at the trend in, at state levels, state assessment data. This is a problem. And this also shows that COVID really wasn't the cause of these low outcomes because they weren't that great to begin with. You've got, you know, and at best, they're about 37% for Minnesota. And it's down below, I think it's at 28% now. So now, this is some of these same states looking at the income and race-based gaps. So in Kansas, and this is on eighth-grade reading proficiency for NAEP. So again, you can compare low-income to low-income across states. There's a 15-point gap, almost twice as many kids who are not low-income are proficient in eighth-grade reading in Kansas. Look at the black and white. 7% in Kansas, 8% in Delaware, 7 in Indiana. There's not enough black students in Wyoming for the data to be reportable. But just enormous gaps, income and race-based gaps, they're everywhere. So we did some research to try to help, and I'll get to why we did this in a minute. But we wanted to compare the change over time. So we developed a composite score. And so this is showing you the change in the four-score composite. And the four scores are fourth grade, eighth grade, reading, and math. So you compare the change, and the composite score for black students in Kansas dropped almost 11 points from 2017 to 2024. Now, to give you an idea of how important that is, 10 points on the NAEP is considered a year's worth of learning. So this is the equivalent of falling a year behind where they were in 2017. White students composite fell by 8.8 points. So the gap is two points wider. Minnesota is one of the rare states where the gap got closer. The gap The gap closed, but only because white students fell more than black students fell. And you can see it's, the national average was basically no change in, in the gap. So this is why we did this. When we talk about, rather than talk about DEI and gender issues directly as we don't like it. For example, there's a lot of people who campaign against it. But it brings up a lot of controversy and we recommend running everything through a student achievement filter. So you can say, you know, part of the justification for DEI years ago was that if we do these things, then the kids are going to feel better about themselves. And that means they'll learn more. Well, unfortunately, that didn't happen. We can look back and see that it didn't produce the results, I guess we hoped. So how do we justify devoting time and resources to programs that aren't improving outcomes as we hoped? That's a way of dealing, talking about something. And when you ask, pose it as a question, it forces someone to respond and try to justify a position rather than say, this is bad, I want to get rid of it. Run everything through a student achievement filter. Now here is the college readiness. And this one is comparing the Kansas college readiness to changes in spending. So obviously the red line is college ready in English, reading, math and science. And by the way, that is a pretty low bar. ACT says college readiness to them means a student has a 75% chance of getting a C on an entry level course. The orange line is how much per student spending would be, would have increased if it had increased just for inflation. And then the green line is actual. So you can see these are really big increases in spending. And yet ironically, when the big spending increases really kicked in, outcomes declined. That's not to say that one caused the other, certainly. But it certainly dispels the notion that if you spend more, you will achieve more. Here's again, several states, this is ACT college ready and you can see the trend. These are states that have relatively high, like 50% or more participation in ACT. When you're looking at ACT or SAT scores, you only want to compare it to states with a very similar participation rate. So if all the kids take it, the, the research shows that you're going to have a smaller score than if, say, 75% of the kids took the test. Because those who didn't take the test, whether they weren't paying attention or whatever the reason, they weren't going to use the results. So maybe it just didn't matter. But again, what the trend is what matters the most when you see it declining. What is causing this? And you can see it's, it's a national problem. Minnesota is the one state that held rather steady, but it's still 26% college ready is, is not the community goal, I would imagine. So in lesson two, we talk about the district's purpose being to improve student outcomes. And this is a quote from A.J. Crable, who wrote Great on Their Behalf. Some of you have had the benefit of listening to A.J. in person. He is tremendous. And he says, "School systems don't exist to have great buildings, happy parents and so forth. Those are all means and they're important, but they're not the ends. They're inputs, not outcomes." And that's a really important distinction we all need to continually remind ourselves. None of these are measures of what students know or are able to do. That is a student outcome. So our purpose should be to improve student outcomes. Well, here's an example of a mission statement from the Shawnee Mission School District. They lead with beliefs. They have missions to have an inclusive culture and engaged community, robust opportunities. We're student achievement. Every individual, it's, they're, they're, they're nice things to aspire to. But we're student achievement. And, and that's, you know, now if you ask the school board of Shawnee Mission, they'd say absolutely, we're focused on improving outcomes. But oftentimes what we say and what we do don't jive. So here's an easy test if you want to determine whether, what the district's purpose is. They probably say it is. One thing you could do is look at your board agendas. How much time is devoted to analyzing student outcomes every month? Probably it's less than 5% if it exists at all, most months. So how does, help me understand how we can be focused on that and yet we spend next to no time on it? Here's another thing that would be a fun test perhaps. Propose a resolution declaring that improving outcomes is the district's purpose and that nothing can take priority or over or interfere with the purpose. That would be a fun conversation to watch among school boards around all the states, frankly. You should be able to say, well, absolutely, I'll vote for that resolution. But I'll bet you there'd be some pushback. If the district's purpose is to improve outcomes, then so should a candidate's purpose. It's, obviously you're going to deal with a lot of issues. And some of them are controversial, some of them are not. But if you're campaigning to run on improving outcomes, you're going to be a lot harder to attack and criticize. I mean, I guess there could be some people saying it's good enough or it won't get better. But your goal is to try to make it better. And, and you explain that. So here's, for example, and this is in, in the book, we have a sample door knocking script. Hi, I'm John Smith and I'm running for the Sacramento School Board. I'd like your thoughts on student achievement goals for our district. Are you as frustrated as I am that only about a third of our students meet math and reading standards? That's actual, by the way, a third meet math and reading standards. Ask a question, you're engaging, see what they say. Well, I'm running because I have a duty to be a part of the effort to help our system better serve our most valuable resource, our students. We need school board members with the determination and leadership skills to guide the district through what is bound to be a difficult challenge. So let me ask you, what do you think our goal should be? I mean, should we strive to have at least 65% of students proficient? They're ready to move on to college or skilled trains, still trades, training? Or should the goal be higher or lower? You're engaging, you've got them focused and thinking. And you're demonstrating that you're a thinking individual. You are running for something, not running against or away from something. And be prepared to say what you think should be done because it would be a understandable question. Well, the answer is you really don't know. And you need to, and I think people will respect that if you say, I won't know until I have a chance to meet with the teachers and principals. They're the experts. The board's role is to set realistic improvement goals and ensure the district has a viable plan in place. Then we monitor progress and adjust as needed along the way. Does that make sense to you? If you go in with whether you're campaigning or you're at a board meeting, it's like, hey, I read about this new curriculum, I think we ought to do it, I think this would be good. Maybe it would, but frankly, most board members don't have the expertise to know that. And there's, it's awfully hard to find out whether something has really worked because the promotional material always says something works. But that's not your job. I mean, it's really, it really is setting goals and ensuring that the board has an effective plan to meet those goals. You have to vet the plan, then you have to monitor the plan. Let the experts tell you what they think needs to be done. So we talked already about the DEI premise and students will learn more. But again, help me understand why we should divert time and resources to something that isn't producing the expected results. Another thing that kind of stumbles people on the, on the campaign trail is saying, well, I'm the conservative candidate or I'm a Republican. Or, you know, my opponent is a liberal. If you use labels like that, it, first of all, it says nothing about what you'll actually do. Because, I mean, what's a Republican these days? What's a Democrat these days? The gamut runs from one extreme to another. So you're not telling anyone anything. But you could be somewhat alienating a voter just by using a label like that, because especially conservative. If, if you say you're a conservative, to some people, that's code for crazy. If you say, and the same thing can apply to liberal or something like that as well. Talk about what you are focused on. And for me, it comes down to whether you're either student focused or you're system focused. Everybody says and probably believes it and is honest about it. Yes, I support education, I want kids to do better. But that doesn't tell me what, something specific. So the two principles we have for student-focused people is, the first one is classroom budgets are built first. You understand, you, you've listened to, ideally, the staff should be coming to the board with things that they think need to be done in classrooms to improve outcomes. You deal with those things first. And obviously you're going to spend more money than what's in the classroom. You can't just say it's this, if we can't do this, we can't do anything else because you have to have lights and heat and buses and so forth. But meet those needs before you get into any kind of discretionary spending. The second principle is that curriculum and teaching methods have no politics or social agenda. We're focusing solely on improving proficiency levels with proven instructional techniques. If someone can't enthusiastically embrace those two principles, they are probably by default a system-focused person. They might not think of themselves that way. But if you're going to let something for any reason get in front of improving outcomes, then you're not focused on improving outcomes. Setting the right tone. You know, there's always going to be, no matter how well you present an idea or respond to a question, there will always be objections, concerns. Some of them might not be stated, some of them might not be stated very nicely. But if you, and if you know that there's going to be an objection coming, get there first. Know how to deal with it. So if you're talking about improving outcomes, look, I believe teachers and everyone else have been working really hard to improve outcomes. Unfortunately, never say but, remember from last week, for those of you who saw Melanie's lesson, but is a negative word. Unfortunately, is a much softer word. Unfortunately, proficiency levels are far from where we all want them to be. And we need to figure out what changes are needed. So we all have to work together with the attitude that no one is to blame for where we are, but everyone's responsible for implementing the changes we need to get there. This kind of a preface, it will at least blunt the concern that you're, you know, I'm not there to blame people. I'm not saying teachers are bad, I'm not saying nobody's doing their job. It's just unfortunately, we are where we are and we're not going to get where we want to be by doing kind of the same things over and over again. We're going to have to figure out what's holding the kids back. I did that twice. Okay, so that is, I could go on and on, on a little bit more, but we're, what, about 45 minutes in here? So let's, let's talk a little bit. Any questions you have? What challenges do you face when you're discussing or learning about student outcomes? Or frankly, anything else? Fire away. You'll have to unmute yourself if you want to ask the question directly or put it in the chat for Tracy to ask.
I think one of the problems you run into is anytime you try to address student proficiency and achievement is, like you said, they, they, they see it as an attack. The teachers or, or the admins. So good ways to, to bring that up. Like you said, to preface, you're working hard, we realize that, you know, and focus. One thing I've found is that many teachers agree that there's too much spent on admin and not on the teachers or intervention, things like that themselves. So any way to help with that would be helpful, but I know you've tried in my area too. And sometimes it's not met very friendly.
Yeah, so Amy, that's a great question and thank you for asking that. It would be helpful, I'll, I'll jump ahead to lesson eight because that really pertains here. Lesson eight is about representing your community. So if you're, if you can use student achievement discussions based on what your community wants, then it's not Amy saying results are too low. It's, it's not, it's like, look, I've been asking around and trying to get an understanding of what our community thinks is acceptable. There's a, Tracy had a great example in a Kansas district in Wabonse, where we went in to do some training. And they were like 43% proficient and the state average was 33. So we introduced ourselves and we said, okay, so we understand you all are pretty proud that you're 10 points above the state average. And they kind of puffed up and said, yeah, yeah, we're doing well. We said, well, do you think your constituents would say mission accomplished at 43%? And they had this stunned look on their faces, every one of them. And they looked at each other in a slight panic. And to their credit, they said, well, no, I guess not. Well, what do you think the community would expect it to be? So when you, and whether you do it in a formal setting like that, or you're out talking with people, you've gone door knocking, always ask, so you have it in mind that what I'm hearing from my constituents is that they'd like to see proficiency levels at 65, 70%, something along those lines. And in fact, the Department of Education in Kansas has a goal of 75%. Well, we're only here. I'm not criticizing the, you know, it's not, it's not an attack on where we are. It's, this is, and again, this isn't Amy saying it. This is our community saying, we need to, we have work to do.
That's a good idea to use that current legislature and those goals of raising that, that, you know, this is where it stood, where it should be. This is where we're at. So that way it takes it off of them. That's a good idea.
Okay. Who's next?
David, do you have, you have your hand raised?
Yes, I've been trying to get somebody to explain to me how being at grade level is not proficient. What's the difference in terms? If you're at grade level, why aren't you proficient?
Well, that is a great question and no one is really going to be able to give you a straight answer. Because, and not because they're trying to hide anything, it's a real conundrum. It's a great question. How can you be, and, and when we say they're at grade level, they also need remedial training. Because that's in the definition from the Kansas Department of Education. It says, "An academically prepared student," which is in level three or four, "an academically prepared student can do these things without the need for remediation." So if you're below level three, you must by definition need some degree of remediation. So it's, it's focusing on, we need to get kids to be proficient. And yeah, you might be successful in life if you graduated high school in level two. That's certainly possible. But our job as a school district is to academically prepare kids and, and not to be, well, that's enough. It's, we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to get every student to be academically prepared for life after high school. And so let's not worry about the, whether it's grade level or proficient or whatever, because you really aren't going to get that resolved, David. They, they don't have an answer, but focus on, we need to get kids up into the proficient level where they're academically prepared for post-secondary as they define it in Kansas.
That was, that's a difficult question.
That was, that's a difficult question, David. I think it's something we've all been striving to get an answer for.
Yeah, it's a real head scratcher.
It is. So Nancy, you have a question. You have your hand raised.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
So one of the things that I've encountered in talking with school board members already around, we talk about, because Delaware, the scores are really the, the crux of the discussion these days. But they've, I've heard more than one school board member say, well, our, our scores is so low because we have special education and English as second language students all in with the class of, you know, learners that don't have those special needs. How do you respond to, to that? Or what, how should a school board member really respond to that conundrum?
Okay, so it's, it's grounded in fact, but the facts aren't really relevant in this case. So you could say, well, I see what you're saying, but how is Delaware different from any other state? I mean, if we say our scores are, are, are you comparing us to other states? Well, don't they have the same special ed kids and so forth? And of course they do. Another thing is, and that's why you understand that there are differences. So in this case, you could look at the low income or the kids who are not low income. I mean, even the, even the kids who are not low income will have, you could look at the Delaware Nape and see that those are, even those kids aren't doing as well as we want them to do. The schools aren't failing, the kids aren't failing, those are negative terms. Talk about it and avoid the negatives, but still make your point. So, you know, I, I mean, I, again, I think everybody's working hard, but, you know, us trying to, and there may be some validity to some of these things, but that doesn't change, that doesn't mean that we don't try to do better, does it?
Right, right. Okay. Yeah, to me, it's, it's, it's being used as an excuse as opposed to saying, how can we solve the problem?
Yeah, and you know, and, and we're all guilty of that. Aren't we? Who, who, who here hasn't tried to justify having a second piece of pie for dessert? You can rationalize anything. You know, I'll, exercise diet, whatever it is, we, that's what human beings do. We, we get a little defensive, so you have to, you, you, you want to, knowing that that's happening, you're going to try to help them come, if you can help someone come to their own conclusion, it's going to stick. Rather than even if they just listened and were polite and agreed with you, that, that might go away the next time someone else talks to them and goes back into the excuse making. So you want to try to lead somebody to, to allow them to walk away from their previously held beliefs and begin to internalize a different way of thinking about it.
Makes sense.
Other questions before I go to the chat? Okay, well Dave, I'm gonna, you know, every school board member, someone who's running for school board really needs to be aware of accreditation. I mean, that's something that every, that really every school board has to wrestle with. It's a state mandate. So here comes the question. What is the process for removing a school's accreditation in Kansas? There's the first part of that question. And if increased funding and legislative and public pressure have no effect on districts declining student outcomes, what about trying what amounts to a quote unquote death penalty on lagging districts? And I assume that, you know, comes to an association with accreditation. Moving, removing accreditation if their scores are not improving or, or whatever.
So that's a great question. I'll, I'll deal with the, the process of removing accreditation first. And this is something that's going to be very different from one state to another. In Kansas, and I, I imagine every state has criteria that a district has to meet in order to be accredited. Some states accredit individual schools rather than entire districts. Kansas used to do that and a couple of years ago began accrediting entire districts. That's not good because, you know, a bad one can get covered up. But anyway, there is a process. It doesn't work because it's not faithfully implemented. A couple of years ago, I asked the Department of Education people, when was the last time a school district in Kansas was not accredited? And the answer was like, oh, you know, I don't know. I, I mean, it's, I don't know. That says school districts never lose their accreditation. Now, here's the ironic thing, and this is where sometimes, I mean, mistakes can happen. But in the case of Kansas, it is a very deliberate decision by the Department of Education to accredit schools, school districts that do not even meet the criteria. The, the district, the state's criteria. One of the criteria is that a, every school district has to comply with state and federal law. Well, in Kansas, we know that at least since two thousand and nineteen, when the state audit came out saying that school districts are not spending their at-risk funding as required in state law. The law says this half a billion dollars now must be spent on above and beyond services for the kids who are academically at risk of failing. And the twenty nineteen audit said, well, they're not doing that. And we knew that because we had looked at all two hundred eighty-six school districts at-risk reports. And they weren't worth the paper they were printed on, as the saying goes. So this audit in twenty nineteen shows that they're not doing it. They run another audit in twenty twenty-three to see what had changed and surprised, nothing had changed. The Department of Education all along has known that schools are ignoring this law. And there were all kinds of excuses for not doing it. The most recent one was, and you can't make this stuff up, okay? Well, here are the fourteen laws that we believe, because the, the accreditation said they must comply with all applicable laws. So magically, this at-risk funding law to them was not applicable because it did not relate to improvement. I mean, really? This, this is, so the accreditation process, it's like any process. It's only good, as good as the people implementing it, if they're doing it with fidelity and fairness. And so now there are states, David, that have procedures where either, I think in Missouri, for example, the state can take over a school district if it's not meeting criteria. Well, that could be good if the state is an honest operator. If not, what difference is that going to make? I mean, it's, the state took over the Kansas City Missouri School District, what, two decades ago? And really, nothing's changed. Other states have a, a procedure where the parents in the district are able to take over. That, I think, would be a more effective tool. Because, I mean, you would basically be running what amounts to a charter school if that happened. You would have a, a board of parents who would be focused on, okay, why are we, why did we lose accreditation? This, obviously our results are really low. What do we have to do differently? Because those conversations rarely happen in school boards all across the country.
Any other questions? Want to give everybody a moment to think through? I know that there are a lot of, well, I, I have a question, Dave. I know that you gave us a lot of really great information. Sometimes this information that you share, that, that we have shared has stunned people. Just to, you know, not overstate that, that the numbers are fairly stunning. So where might our school board candidates be able to find some of this information? How would they be able to get it in order for them to create? Or, or how would they create or get to know some of this information so that they can put this together? That, that kind of, can you, can you answer that for us?
Yeah, sure. That's, that's great. Thanks, Tracy. You should be able to get all this information from your school district or the state. But it, the information generally, if it exists, isn't very well organized. So we have, operate a website and the URL is kansas.gov.org. Kansasopengov.org. And so on there, we have state assessment results for every district. We have, if you want to get into, we have ACT scores. We have, and, and there's some scary trends, by the way. We also have a lot of information on how much schools spend, how much they have in cash reserves, how that's changed over, all this is, goes back to two thousand and five. We have it by year, by district. And it's just a tremendous volume of information, even for some of the larger districts, we have their payrolls listed. So that's, you know, that's one, that's probably the best resource. There's also, we publish a book, it's called our Public Education Fact Book. It's kind of something that can fit in your pocket and it has a lot of historical information on statewide data as well as some basic information about every district. So you could ask, just send me an email and, or Tracy, and we'll get a book, get one of those Public Education Fact Books in the mail to you.
Also, I would let you all know that we have placed the Kansas Open Gov link in the chat. But if by some reason that you need a reminder of that, please, most of you have probably received an email from me or from one of us, please don't hesitate to reach out. We'd be happy to send you any of that. This Kansas Open Gov website links directly to the Kansas State Department of Education. It pulls all the information from there. So if people are saying, well, you know, you're getting sort of alternative place, that is not true, comes straight from the Kansas Department of Education. So it's just a little bit easier to work through that from that website rather than going to the Kansas Department of Education. If you ever tried that, that can be a little unwieldy and a little confusing and chaotic at times, Dave.
Tracy, let me, let me ask a question. Does anybody want to talk about, Amy brought up a challenge. Does anybody have a, a challenge if you're running for school board? Like, do you have any questions you're not sure about how to deal with something or an issue if it comes up? Or if you're on a school board, I mean, it could be just, you know, relationships with other board members. What are some of the challenges you're facing? Nobody has any challenges or you're all bashful?
You, you had posed it in a way as if I had a question. My name is Jesse Brinson. I'm in Kansas and three twenty-three district. But considering running and listening to a lot of the information from what you've said, receiving your book, I think about a week ago, or the, the book or the seven ways, I'm sorry, I don't remember the full title, but and then listening to the, the lady from last week. I mean, one of the issues, one of the, I don't know, I don't have a question at this moment, but one of the challenges I'm facing is the reason I consider running is because of some of the, just parental rights, I don't feel that our school district is honoring. And so wanting to, in a sense, have people feel like, hey, as a parent, I'm included in my, my, my kid's education, you know, as the overall advocate, I think is how the, the young lady from last week said it. And so one of the challenges I had is, I, you know, I, a lot of the phrases that she used, I didn't use when I first met with the board and have met a couple of times and continue in the conversation with them and just, I, I, I fear that they might see me as more adversarial than really thinking about the, just the, the district as a whole and wanting to honor parents as a whole, you know? And so that's one of the things I, I think about as I consider where I may stand in those relationships.
All right, that, that's great, Jesse. So tell me, how have you, how, how would you describe what you've heard from other parents? What, what are, what are their specific concerns? Is it about their kids being exposed to controversial material? Just, or just in general?
That's, that was one of, the, the large part, I feel like parents don't know what's actually going on. And, and because I, I think our area is a decent area, to say the least. And I'm, I'm relatively new to the area. Our kids have been in the district three years. But just being in the realm where I've ran, I was going to run for school board in Lawrence and the USD four nine seven and then some other political opportunities. I, I started to kind of wake up to everywhere I was going, trying to figure these things out. So the few parents, and I want to make sure that's clear, the few that I've talked to is, they really, they do believe in parental rights and wanting their kids to get in the best education. Many of them don't agree with, or would say that they don't agree with SEL, the social emotional learning. But some, I don't know, they understand it completely and are seated, the, the dangers, if there is any, is if they would say to it. So and that, that, that's, I haven't, I haven't yet canvassed in or talked to, I would say, a large portion of people to be able to say, hey, this is what I know a lot of people are thinking.
Okay, so that's, I, I imagine a universal issue from one border to the next. We do an annual statewide survey on a variety of topics. And I don't think we did it in December, but the year before, I think, we asked a question. It's like, how do you respond to this statement? Parents should have the final say in the education of their children. And it was eighty-four percent of parents, and these were asking of parent, people who had children or grandchildren in public school. Eighty-four percent said yes, parents absolutely or somewhat agreed that parents should have the final say. So again, that's a community viewpoint. And it's, and, and you could honestly say that, from what I'm hearing in our district, that, that that seems to hold true. An awful lot of people say parents should have the final say in how their kids are educated. How do you feel about that? You can engage in a question. So you're not talking about anything specific that is being done in school. It's just, let's, because that, that's a really important dividing point. What that would tell me as a school board member is, well, then I guess everything we do should be opt-in rather than opt-out. So that parents get to make that decision. So it's, you, you, you could approach it from a opt-in, opt-out. Should parents have that right to choose? Be careful about using words like parents' rights. Unfortunately, rights and patriotic and other, those types of words have negative connotations to some people. Even if they're not going to come back and scream in your face, they might feel an argument coming and they just get turned off. But you want to try to find ways to phrase it that it, it gets your point across in the least confrontational way. And engage them in what they think. And you're basing it on, this is what I'm hearing. I've seen this polling, I've heard this from people, and this is their concern. It, it's not that they disagree necessarily with a lot of what's going on. It, it's an uncertainty, but a lot of people have an uncertainty. Another question we asked was, how concerned are you that your children may be exposed to objectionable material? Sixty-six percent of Kansans said they were very or somewhat concerned about that. So there, there's plenty of data that indicates and you can validate that. You've probably, you don't have to go ask the question, you no doubt heard all this from other conversations. So phrase it, I think if you come at it from that way, it's, it's a, you, you come off as the adult in the room. And, and like, are we doing what? Because really, it's, you know, and this is also in lesson eight, when you get elected to run for board, you're not there to represent your opinion. You're not there to represent the district's interest either. You're representing the people who elected you. And every, so every, just like with student achievement is a filter, community. And every, so every, just like with student achievement is a filter, community is another filter to, to run everything through. This is, this isn't Jesse saying this. This is Jesse representing a lot of people who are in our community who are expressing this concern. And a lot of these things are not necessarily right or wrong, but we need to have a conversation. How do we make those decisions? And, and so you're forcing somebody who disagrees at least has to try to justify why they think parents shouldn't be able to have the final say. Does that help? You're muted.
Yeah, that helps a ton. Um, it's, uh, this, this may not be, so shoot me down on this one, but this may not be the time answers, but why is confrontational bad? Um, and I, I think that just might be my upbringing, how I grew up, just like, you know, hey, all right, let's, let's, let's talk about it then, let's go. But why is it so bad? Um, or maybe not bad is not the word, but why is that such a turnoff, I guess?
Okay, people, that great question, uh, really good question. So when I'm talking about confrontation, uh, that kind of runs the gamut. It could be a hostile confrontation. To some people, it's just like, oh, can't we just, I don't want to, I, I don't want to have any kind of a disagreement. You know, there are people who are just so fed up with all the back and forth and, you know, not that you're doing anything, but it's just, I don't want to get into a controversy. When you, and this, this is, uh, true in almost every case. Elections are won in the middle. There are people at one end of the spectrum who are probably going to vote for you almost no matter what you do. And there are people at the other end who are probably never going to vote for you, no matter what you say. It's the persuadables in the middle. Some of those are Democrats, some of those are Republicans, some of those are independents. So you want to make sure that you're talking to those people. Uh, anything that you say is certainly not going to offend or turn off people on, at least on one end of the spectrum, the way that you might lean. But if you're focusing on the folks in the middle and you're trying to have a conversation, uh, it, it is, it, it's almost the way you say things is going to resonate much more than what you say, what the, the subject you're talking about. And so you're focusing on those persuadable people, understand what, what's on their minds. And that's why asking questions and presenting yourself as, uh, wanting to be part of a solution to move our community forward. You know, and, and especially, you know, Jesse, in areas like, I mean, three to three twenty-three is, is sort of rural, but there's places in Kansas that are way more rural. And so there's a lot of concerns about, are my, is my community going to disappear? Uh, there's, you, you need to understand kind of the mindset of the general population in the community uh, and make sure that you're, you're addressing them. It's, you want to, basically, in, in, in retail, it's, it's like, um, you want to sell somebody something they want, not what you want them to have. You know, a lot of restaurants fail because the, the head chef is like, this is what people need to be eating. Well, if they don't want it, they're not going to buy it. It might be great, but you have to know your customer. And so it's, you know, it's, it's a, so having a conversation, um, and not being objectionable, um, it, it's, it's just, this is, this is where I'm, I'm, I'm thinking. This is what's kind of really driving me to run for office. And I'm hearing, because I've heard these things from the community, how do you feel about that? It's, you're, you're, now, to some people, that will be a little bit confrontational because you're making them answer a question. Uh, and, and people don't want to be wrong. That's why a lot of people sit at board meetings and never say anything. They're more concerned about being wrong than, than trying to advan, I mean, it, it paralyzes people. It's understandable. Uh, but that's why, so when I, when I was talking about, uh, do- door knocking and you're saying, uh, I'd, I'd like to know where, you know, what do you think we should have? Now, should it be like sixty-five percent or seventy-five percent? You've set a floor that's a reasonable floor, and it gives, it makes them, uh, much easier, much more able to respond. They have something to measure it against. You know, they might be thinking, oh, I don't know, is it fifty percent? Is it ninety percent? I don't want to be wrong. So if you kind of, you, you understand a little bit, a lot of this is like being a counselor. Um, you know, it's, you might say it's like raising kids. You're, you're trying to get them to do things, see things your way. Uh, and yeah, with kids, you can Bigfoot, but that's only going to go so far in terms of long-term effectiveness. Uh, you're trying to teach them something. So you're trying to have different, the, the conversations vary by situation, but the approach is trying to engage people.
Any other questions?
I had a quick question, um, something I've noticed on a lot of the charts with, um, since a lot of the charts that I've seen start around two thousand and sixteen. Am I crazy or am I? I've noticed, it seems like when SEL and the Kansas Can and everything started around two thousand and sixteen, that a lot of the achievement continued to decline. And am I crazy to think it's that simple that losing that twenty to thirty minutes a day to SEL where the kids, especially in the elementary school, could be more focused on reading? Um, that would make a big difference in the remainder of their school years. Could, could have caused a lot of that decline, or is that, is that too simplistic thinking?
No, uh, Amy, that's not at all simplistic and, and good for you for noticing a trend. Uh, when you see a trend, good, bad, doesn't matter whether it's good or bad. Uh, you naturally want to understand, well, what's driving it? If it's good, we want to do more of it. If it's bad, what do we need to stop? What do we need to do differently? Um, and so in Kansas, um, we start with twenty fifteen because that's when the state assessment started. Uh, if you look at NAEP results, uh, you see a slide starting a, around that time. It varies, but twenty, you know, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. So we look back at, now what all changed, and SEL certainly was one of the changes. Uh, whether you, you know, and where that intersects with DEI and gender issues and critical race theory and all that. But that wasn't the only thing that was going on. Uh, we had Common Core, uh, being pushed on states in twenty fourteen. And that was the price of getting out from under No Child Left Behind. Remember, you had to get every kid proficient, or you'd lose your federal funding. Well, you can't have that happen. So of course, I'll read a Common Core.
Yeah, that's true.
And maybe it took a little, a year or two before some of that kicked in. Uh, there's, um, in the book, we talk about, um, there's a book by Jonathan Haidt, um, The Anxious Mind. Uh, I'm sorry, Jonathan Haidt, uh, The Anxious Mind, and he noticed, uh, changes in mental health issues. There was a real spike in mental health issues around two thousand and twelve, thirteen. Um, I, I think it's in chapter seven, maybe, uh, you can actually see the, the charts in there. Uh, he attributes one of that was that's when smartphones hit mass, uh, penetration. And so you had this enormous, not only distraction, but now we're having kids, you know, the, the comparison to each other and the feeling of his inadequacy to come up with it. And if, yeah, and then we introduced social emotional learning. And I, you know, I can imagine, uh, that, uh, a kid who is in elementary school could start to have some, maybe some mental health issues if they've got school people trying to tell them you might not be who you think you are.
Yeah.
You know, if you're, you're trying to, and, and even with good intentions. Uh, if, if, if teachers are trying to raise questions and doing it because they're told to, uh, in a lot of cases, if you're trying to raise an issue, like, what's your family life like? Well, maybe I hadn't thought about that. Maybe is there a problem? Uh, you know, and some things, there's a, um, uh, former, uh, State Senator Molly Baumgartner got an email from a constituent a couple of years ago. And the lady said, um, I am a, uh, we are a biracial family. And every day, my little girl comes home from elementary school having to wonder if mommy is the bad guy or daddy is the bad guy. Because they were of two different races. And those are the kinds of thoughts, even, even if you didn't preach that, that's how minds can wander. So when you're dealing with, in, in this case, it's mental health issues, uh, it can be, you know, you could be on city council, you could be a county commissioner. Uh, the first thing you want to do is look in the mirror. What, is there anything we're doing that could be exacerbating the problem?
Oh, yeah.
And, and those are the easiest things to fix because you just stop it. And they don't cost any money. It's immediate, and it's, so why are we doing it? We can go back to DEI. Um, there were people, I'm sure, who honestly believed that if they did all those things, kids would learn better. Well, it, it didn't. And it doesn't matter at this point why it didn't, it just didn't. But we have to always be focusing on, and so anytime you get a new, the next new thing that comes along, and there always will be after social emotional learning or whatever. I mean, you really need to, excuse me, look very hard at the data. If there's no data, then there's, you know, why change? Uh, asking, you know, we're, we're going to talk next week about, uh, ways to start getting your district focused on its purpose of improving student outcomes. And we use the Building Needs Assessment Process. Uh, if you've gone through and had conversations with teachers and principals over the years, think back on what they raised as issues. If someone's coming to say, we ought to be doing this, and no one's really been talking about it as a problem, well, why are we doing it? It, it doesn't seem, are, are we doing something, you know, are we trying to find a problem to solve? Uh, and you've got the solution, and now you just need to find a way to get it in. You don't know if there really is a problem to be resolved. So it's, it's asking a lot of thoughtful questions. Uh, and it's, I, 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 I would bet, I couldn't tell you how much, but absolutely. You have, uh, a lot of these increases in mental health issues, in suicidal, uh, attempts or thoughts. Um, kids just kind of dropping out, uh, because they just can't, they can't deal with the social pressure. Some of that's been inadvertently, uh, caused by the way schools have been adapting. Whether they meant to or not.
Thank you, Amy and Jesse. Anyone else have, you know, some of these conversations bring something up in, to mind of anticipating some things you might need to consider as you start building your campaigns?
I have another question, and then we'll wrap it up. Um, we, uh, we scheduled this for two hours because we weren't sure how long it was really going to take, not knowing questions and so forth. Um, and I thought I had, I mean, my presentation was closer to one hour. Uh, and so I'd really like to know, it, would you like to have more information? Uh, or do you think that was, uh, a, a good balance? Do you think two hours of this, uh, especially number stuff, uh, might get too much? I, I'd appreciate, even if you don't want to say anything now, if you just drop us an email and let us know, that would be helpful as, as we schedule, uh, other training going forward. Um, it, um, I couldn't believe that it'd only been, of course, I talk fast, but it, it had, uh, I thought I was going to take uh, at least an hour and twenty minutes or an hour and a half to get through that material. Um, but it didn't. So let us know. Uh, and again, I, I just want to thank everybody again for, not, not just only for being here, but for being interested in, in doing something and, and trying to move your community forward. Tracy, take it away.
All right. Any last minute comments? Oh, we do have a, a, in the chat, one, uh, our trainings are good in evenings. So thank you so much for your feedback. And yeah, do let us know.
Okay.
Well, if, if we have nothing else, don't forget next week, Thursday, May eighth, we'll reconvene at the same time at six thirty to hear the next lesson, as Dave was saying, lessons three and four in your book, Adult Behaviors Need to Change in School Finance. Um, uh, with Dave Trowbert. And the final session, remember, will be on May fifteenth at six thirty as well. You'll use the same Zoom link to attend those sessions as you use this evening. But if you have questions or you need any help, please don't hesitate to reach out. Um, and so if you don't have a book of the eight things to know running for school board, please let me know, and we can get you a free copy of that. Uh, please let us know that you have any other questions or concerns. And we hope that you have a great week until we see you next Thursday, same time, same place. Good night.
Thank you.